Public hearing around blasting approval for 175 Green Bush Road has been postponed because of an error in how the notice was published, was advertised. So if you're here for that hea- for that hearing, you don't have to stay.
Lucky you.
All right, meeting of the Town of West Warwick Planning Board, Monday, May 6th, 6:00 PM. Could you take the role?
Here.
Joe Godiellose.
Here.
Felix Apollonia.
Here.
Joe DiMartino.
Here.
Wayne Miller.
Here.
Item number one is approval of the minutes, the minutes from our last meeting in the packet.
I'll move the motion to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Item two, public meeting. This is a major subdivision, 1024 Main Street. This is for final approval. Okay. Tom, how are you?
Good. Is that on? All right.
It's on. We can hear it.
Too high for me. I don't know who you guys were expecting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have marked for the record exhibit number one, the application. Exhibit number two, the planning board preliminary plan approval. Exhibit number three, a letter dated March 9, 2019, from Attorney Cronin. And exhibit number four, the final plan dated March 12, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as Mr. DeFiore mentioned, we have submitted a final plan, and on that final plan, we have included the tree to be removed and the trees to be trimmed in accordance with our agreement with the neighbor, which we're missing from our preliminary plan. So those additions have been made, and the board has been provided with assurances that those actions will be taken at the time of construction. I believe that was the only outstanding.
I think that was the only issue when they came through before. Anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
I'm not sure what's to do with the applicant. I have a property on 11.
Stand and pick.
Stand and pick. Yep.
My name is Steve Hunt. I have a property on 11 Tiffany Avenue.
Your address.
What?
Your address.
11 Tiffany Avenue.
Could you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
We say 11 Tiffany. I have a property on 11 Tiffany Avenue.
Yep, that's, that's not this, not, you get, it's a different agenda item coming up later, Tiffany Avenue.
I don't know when it would come up.
But it's, I mean, on our.
Okay.
Do you have an agenda, sir?
I do, but I don't, I just got it my.
This is the main.
You didn't send us this. You just gave it to us now.
This is 1024 Main Street.
Yep, then the agenda of Tiffany Avenue is part of the Crompton.
Oh, okay, that's not even the same.
It's.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Which is a major subdivision for Crompton Avenue. It's Crompton there against Tiffany.
Okay.
And that's item five, so that'll become a player. Any, anyone else that wants to speak around the 1024 Main Street? Two lot subdivision? No? For or against? No? Seeing none? Do we want to, I'll entertain a motion that we approve.
Move the motion for approval. Second.
Are you familiar with the Planning Office recommendations, Attorney Cronin?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not going to bother to read them into the record.
They've been previously agreed to.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom, there were, there were two, there were two individuals that spoke last time. They pretty much satisfied them.
Yes, it was just a matter of documenting the agreement that had been reached.
All right, thanks for doing that.
Okay. All right, motions made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item three, public hearing, major land development. This is for 103 La Griss Avenue. Again, it's coming in for final approval. It's been here before. So, okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Mr. DeFiore, Christian Capizzo. I chair the Environmental Practice Group of Partridge, Senna, and Han. I represent the applicant Bank of America for preliminary plan approval. That was previously before the TRC in the fall of 2018. We appeared before you and received a conditional master plan approval back in January of 2019. Subsequent to that, we appeared before the West Warwick Zoning Board to seek a special use permit as well as a dimensional use variance. I have copies of the zoning board master plan decision and the affidavit of notice that I'd like to submit as exhibit one, two, and three to Mr. DeFiore and for the record.
Okay.
There will be so marked, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. This, this looks to be exactly the same as what we previously approved without any changes?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. I do have Mr. Lingam here from Stonefield Engineering.
You did kill another tree.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Couple.
Couple. Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Yeah, yeah, you went from here to zoning?
Yes, we went here to zoning, and we, I submitted the zoning approval. I have, I can present copies to the planning board members if you'd like.
Is there anything in the zoning approval that we should be concerned about by?
No, I included the zoning approval in your packets, and any of the stipulations in the zoning approval have been incorporated into our preliminary and final.
Okay. Okay. So are there other stipulations? So in, in the planning recommendations on the agenda, you've incorporated them?
Yeah, there were no additional.
No, nothing different.
Stipulations in the zoning approval. The zoning approval did incorporate the prior planning, planning stipulations into its.
Okay, great. Okay. So any, any questions from any, anyone on the board? No? Any public comment? Does anybody want to comment on this? It's going to be an ATM at the corner of Central Road and Main Street over there?
Main Street.
Yeah, on La Griss Avenue. That's right. It's La Griss, where there's not Central Road and Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, there were no remon, no remon to set zoning either.
Yeah, okay. All right, so it looks like no, nobody else wants to talk, so we're okay with that? And we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second?
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good luck with that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Give you a second on that.
Yes. All right, now. Item four, public informational meeting, major subdivision, 6 Enfield Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that Mr. Apollonia is recusing himself as having an interest within the 200-foot radius.
Okay.
He will not take place, take part in any of the discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Joseph Brennan from the Law Office of Joe Shikarchi.
Whoa, 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 Mr. Brennan. Mr. Chairman, I have marked as exhibits, the application. Exhibit number one, the application. Exhibit number two, the master plan survey. Exhibit number three, a legal description of possible A. Exhibit number four, a legal description of possible B. Exhibit number five, the abudders list. Exhibit number six, the radius map. Exhibit number seven, the tax collector's report. Exhibit number eight, the master plan site plan. And exhibit number nine, a zoning decision dated, itemized as 2014-2.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Joseph Brennan from the Law Office of Joe Shikarchi, here on behalf of the applicant, John Murrow. First, I think I need to submit the affidavit for notice that was sent out.
I'll mark it. I will mark that exhibit number 10.
And before you, you see our application. We're here tonight to seek a master plan approval to subdivide two abutting merged lots totaling 15,000 square feet to create two lots. One conforming lot with an existing dwelling having less than the required side yard setback, and one undersized, non-conforming, 5,000-square-foot lot with less than required lot area, lot frontage, and lot width for the construction of a new single-family dwelling in the R10 zoning district. The reason that we are before you today is about five to six years ago, John Murrow approached the city with three lots. These are three lots that were existing 5,000-square-foot a lot. Because of the merger law, which I believe you probably all are familiar with, in theory, those lots merge into three. So when he approached the town to build on one of those lots, the town came to the agreement with him at that time that they would legally merge two of them, so you can see it through the land evidence records, and it's not just there in theory, and then he would have one outstanding lot instead. And the usual process is what we're following now. You go through master plan approval, you go to zoning for, on the conditional master plan approval, get the approval, then get preliminary here and final here. Unfortunately, at that time, they went through the entire planning board process. He has a favorable planning board decision, and then afterwards, they told him to go to zoning. So he spent considerable amount of money cutting these lots and changing it, and in theory, actually has subdivided the lot in the past, but then when you go for zoning to be able to finalize it, he was denied. So as such, he has two lots. He has the one 10,000-square-foot lot that he formed with the agreement from the town, and then the other 5,000-square-foot lot. But unfortunately, to Mr. Murrow's detriment, when you don't receive that zoning approval, that merger law kicks in one second later again on him, and it merges the lots. So in theory now, it's one big lot all over again, even though he went through the time, the money, and the expense, working with the town, with the town's permission to do so. Since then, it's still, as you're familiar with, and you've probably heard these problems, it creates a different lot for the tax assessor, so now you get a sewer usage fee for that as well. So all these five years, he's been paying a sewer usage fee on a lot that in theory should be merged, but that he had subdivided, and now he can't do anything with. So we're before you because we're going through that process again. I've read Mr. Carrulo's recommendations. He does a very good job summarizing. I've known him for a while, and he's correct in saying that our plan before you is not within the comprehensive plan of the Town of West Warwick. And the reason why it's not is because when you subdivide lots to create new construction, it's within pretty much every city and town in the entire state of Rhode Island's comprehensive plan that you don't want to create undersized lots or lots that aren't in conformance. So what we've done is we've worked to make ours in as conformance as possible for you to help assist, because that's why boards are created. If it was so black and white, there'd be no need for a board, but we're in that gray area where we need help from the board. We need your assistance, because we've got this poor landowner who went through the process with the help of the Town of West Warwick and was unfortunately denied in the end after he came to an agreement with them. Otherwise, he would have just walked away right from the start if, if, if people had explained it to him the way that it would have actually happened and the process had been correct. It is within the characteristics of the neighborhood. I'm going to, I'm just going to submit into the record photos of the setbacks of the other properties in the neighborhood, and I'm going to submit it as an exhibit, so that you can see how close everyone else's houses are to the lot lines. This isn't some humongous neighborhood. There's a factory across the street that actually produces sausages, I believe, and then you have houses built on top of each other. And so what we're doing is we're actually conforming the best that we can. So our plan for our new lot will meet every setback. We'll meet the front yard setback. We'll meet the rear yard setback. We'll meet the side yard setbacks. And I'm not sure, there's many houses in that 200-foot neighborhood who can come here tonight with clean hands saying that their houses aren't within those setbacks, because I, I have a good feeling that a lot of them are. We're also going to be on, on the side so that we won't affect anybody else. It's just one single-family residence. It doesn't create a lot of new traffic. It doesn't create a lot of new noise. This isn't a commercial business. This isn't anything that's grand door and, and will create a nuisance in the neighborhood. It adds taxes to the city's tax roll for a new residential lot instead of one that's not being used or utilized. And at the same time, it helps correct a wrong that was wronged on this, this poor guy about five to six years ago when he started this process. I do have John Murrow here tonight, if there's any questions. I do know the proposed house is, we put the footprint on so you can see that we'd be within conformance on that lot. And the house that we propose is a modest size. It's only going to be about a, just over 1,100-square-foot house. So we're not talking about a monstrosity either. So if you have any questions for us, we'll be happy to answer. John did reach out to the neighbors the best that he could this past weekend. He went knocking door to door, trying to reach who he could. Nobody reached out to me or my office individually, so I, I do believe there might be some opposition today, but we haven't had a chance to speak with them, unfortunately. So anything we do here would, would be news to us as well.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment. I have a slightly different opinion. When my brother said that the, it's, it's not, it, when my brother said that it's not, I think his words were, "not accepted practice to create undersized lots." I have a stronger version, opinion that it is not allowed to create undersized lots. So I just want to say there is a difference of opinion on the law on that.
You mentioned you had a decision from the planning board?
Yes, there was a decision in favor. Is that it?
That's the zoning.
Oh, that's the zoning. I apologize. Do you have the planning?
Yeah, this is the zoning board, which I believe is in your, yes, it's already in your records.
We may not have the planning ones on us, but it was, it was passed through the planning board level, though.
I've, I've been on the planning board since before then. I don't recall it coming by. So I have missed some meetings, so it, it, that doesn't mean that you didn't bring it in there, but I was on the planning board at that time, and I don't recall this conversation.
I've been on with the planning board since 2004, and I do not recall it.
I don't recall this either.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I have a copy of the prior application. It dates back, as Mr. Brennan said, it dates back to 2013. The applicant was represented by an attorney at the time, a Mr. Petracca, and that did, I don't believe it went to the planning board per se. It went to the planning department, and it was approved administratively by the planner at the time.
Okay.
So there was an approval issued by the town, by the town planner, I believe, in that subdivision, that quote-unquote administrative subdivision, I believe was recorded in the land evidence records.
I don't want to ask who the planner was at the time, but I know when I wanted to do a one-lot subdivision, I had to come to the planning board and the zoning board to get it approved. Nothing could be done, and it couldn't be done administratively until I had done both of those things. So I know, and that was in 2008, okay? So I know that going back to 2008, you should have been instructed, because you had to have a hearing here and then zoning in order to get this approved. Apparently, we can't find any evidence of that happening.
And I agree with you, and that's what we're, we're here to hopefully attempt to rectify and go through the process the right way.
I think that might be the confusion. If you look at the top of the stamp, it says planning board on it.
Says planning, yeah.
But it was, I go, that's, that stamp indicates planning board, but I believe it was approved administratively by the planner at the time.
Okay. Yeah, because we didn't, we haven't seen it before. And you know the process, right?
I.
We, we'll, we need to basically today make a recommendation to the zoning board, and the zoning board is free to ignore our recommendations, and they often do, just sort of, you know, just go with it, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
And, and, but I also think, so anyway, I also think it would be very difficult for us to recommend the zoning board approve the creation of a 5,000-square-foot lot and an area zone for 10,000 square foot lots. But we, let's continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions of the attorney?
No, you did mention you, you have another drawing showing the proposed house and the 5,000-square-foot lot.
I believe the survey itself has the, an outline.
It doesn't have the, no. I don't, nothing, not that I can see.
No.
I can see the, it has the, the single-family, the existing houses on it.
The existing.
But, but I don't see what, you know, and, and.
So this is just a copy. This isn't a stamped survey, but I can submit this as part of the record that would just show the proposed house being within the setbacks created by the zoning code.
Okay.
And we would attest, although it's not stamped, that it would be in conformance with that.
Exhibit number 12.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions? Does anyone else here that wants to speak in favor of this application? Oh, does anybody want to speak in, in opposition to this application? Sure, come on up. Attorney Cronin, are you?
Oh, I'll let the chairman go first.
Okay.
You're off enough.
Okay.
To office.
Okay.
I feel like I'm violating a law by not letting a lawyer speak first.
Yeah, you're gonna, well, that's true.
My name is William Louis Patenood. I am a resident, 18 Enfield Drive, West Warwick.
Could you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the whole truth, but the truth.
I do. Thank you. And thank you to the planning board for your time, having, sitting there in the Arctic Redevelopment Agency. I know giving up time is important. I do note that we do not have name placards, so I will note that at my next meeting.
I will ask that the planning board either deny the application, or if you have to recommend,
make a recommendation to the zoning board, that you do so to, for them to deny.
Yeah, we can't deny it.
So then I ask you to make a recommendation for denial for the reasons, at least two of the reasons that are noted in Mr. Carrulo's, the Planning Office findings, number one and number two. I would also suggest number six on traffic. Enfield Drive is a throughway to the Lower Platte as well as to the Cranston Platte. That road has significant more traffic than any of the other streets in parallel to that. So I would ask you to make that consideration as well. Certainly, it is not a large opening onto Providence Street, and it is certainly the one that everyone takes very quickly. I would also ask you to kind of maybe think a little bit more about this procedural issue that we just had. This was new to me in terms of the attestation that there was a planning board approval. Perhaps that was because it was stamped apparently on the, on the, inappropriately on the plans. So that is an issue as well. And then I would ask you to read through the original 2015, 14 zoning board rejection of this, which I think goes into specific language as to why I, and I know some of the other neighbors are here, so I will, I will keep my remarks short, that this is not in keeping with the neighborhood, that this would be a detriment to me as a pour of butter, to everyone in that street, which is a gateway to Brookfield Hills, which is a gateway to West Warwick. I would ask you to, to review that as well, because having sat up there and made someone go through the, the, the process, I agree, is, is inappropriate. So the sooner we get this denied, the better. So I want to thank you for your time as well.
Thank you.
And I look forward to monitoring the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants, cares to speak? Okay. All right. Attorney Cronin, back again.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you here as an attorney or?
I, I am.
Okay.
So I don't have to sway you in.
Nope.
There's nobody, nobody will believe you anyway.
So Thomas Cronin for Angela Bernero and her sisters, whose names I'm looking up right now, who are the owners of 22 Enfield Drive since the unfortunate passing of their mother recently, Catherine Pantano and Carol Marzilli. I will not belabor the point. In addition to the zoning ordinance requirements that prohibit the formation of an undersized lot and, and in addition to building on an undersized lot, the, there's this concept in the law called administrative finality. And it applies in this case, because to the best of my knowledge, and Mr. Brennan did an admirable job presenting the facts of the case, no appeal was taken from that 2014 zoning board review. And as a result, no matter the reason, whether he was misled by the town, which, which seems like a possibility or not, you can't refile the same petition and collaterally attack it at, say, the planning board or even the planning department. Those rights are waived when you fail to take your appeal. So I would, I would agree with the previous speaker that the zoning board decision from 2014 does lay out an excellent factual analysis for why the petition should not be approved, and I will not reiterate those, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
We'll get, let's hear from everybody, and then I'll ask you to respond, okay? Because we got a few more that want to speak.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one comment?
Yes.
On what Mr. Cronin said. While I agree with him in general principle about administrative finality, within the planning and zoning law, there is a provision that if something is denied.
Yeah.
You can't go back unless there's a substantial change.
Yeah.
Within a year, which I would interpret to say that it's saying that administrative finality doesn't really apply, that you can go back after the year.
Okay.
So, you know.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Elizabeth Pazullo, 5 Linden Drive.
I'm David Pazullo, 5 Linden Drive.
Could you raise your right hands? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
I do.
So we were here five years ago, and not sure why we're even back now. I thought it was a finite decision, a final decision because of the undersized lot. The footage did not meet the town requirements. It's a narrow lot. The house itself is sitting just about on the line. It's about four feet from the line of this new supposedly split-up lot area, so I don't know what your setbacks really are. In fact, the garage, it's, I'm, I'm in their backyard, so this house will affect me directly, my side yard to, to that side yard. The, the fence has been falling down for years. When I first met Mr. Murrow, he showed me on his phone the new fence he was going to put up. All we've had, this whole section's have been knocked down and cleared out. I have a garage now with a big canister of gas sitting two feet from my property. It's, it's a mess. It's not taken care of. We can see it from our second floor very well. We've had many conversations over the condition of the property, but be that as it may, I've learned something tonight that I have a sausage factory in my neighborhood that I never knew, and I've been there since 1984, so I'm not even sure what that's all about. The setbacks, I don't really know the footage. I don't think it really fits anything. The traffic on Enfield, to go into the Cranston subdivision that doesn't have any other egress, but to come through West Warwick, we have their trash trucks, their cars, their buses, and if you come up out of that area, come up the hill, Linden Drive is the straight shot. The traffic is ridiculous. The speed of the traffic down our two streets is ridiculous. I tried to get a stop sign when I first moved there. No, you can't put a stop sign on the hill. We have a stop sign on the hill now, so that's really kind of helped, but a lot of traffic in that area. I brought, I took some pictures during the rain. I just want to put them in that shows that in my mind from our second floor, and you look at that area, there's just not room for me to picture where any kind of house is going to be in that area.
Mr. Chairman, one, two, three, four, five, a bunch of pictures.
Bunch of pictures.
Marked exhibit 13.
Unfortunately, the colored, they don't truly show.
It's my print.
How, really how unkempt the whole property has been maintained. As my husband says, the fence is rotted, a huge, a significant hunk was removed, and now the shrub from Mr. Murrow's lot has kind of. and now the shrub from Mr. Morrow's lot are kind of now pushing back against the still-existing rotting fence. It's, uh, the lawn doesn't get mowed, the hedges don't get trimmed, the leaves don't get raped. It's a mess. And as he said, now with that hunk that had, the fence that has now come down, you see the back of the garage, a big gas tank, propane tank, and a busted hedge that's starting to come. It just, it's very unsightly. So to say you're going to create another area for another small house, even though it is small, it's going to be squished in there, and what's there now is not well taken care of.
We just don't feel it's the neighborhood to be shoe-horning another piece of property with a house like that. We're all trying to take care of our properties and, and have value. I know we just all went through a reevaluation in December, and this is surely going in the right direction for us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak, either for or against this application?
State your name and address.
Jacqueline DeGrazio, 2 Enfield Drive.
Raise your right hand. So I tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes. So I'd just like to say that we are neighbors to Mr. Morrow, and we were not given notice about this meeting. We were given by other neighbors, and nobody reached out or came over and knocked or rung the doorbell. I can attest to that. As well as the fact that there is no factory. It is a definite residential neighborhood. And I, as the last gentleman has stated, I would assume that, you know, creating a single-family home on that small of a lot will most likely affect everybody's values on their homes, because the lot size will be so diminished in the neighborhood. So I just think it would be a very bad idea.
What number on, on Enfield were you?
Two.
I'm looking at the list of abutters that was submitted, and I don't see you on it. That's why you didn't get one.
Oh, okay.
I guess.
I guess. I mean, they stated they knocked on all of the neighbors' homes, but...
Mr. Chairman, appearance waves it.
Appearance waves it, so it's as good as getting notice, okay? Okay. Alright, so, are you for or against?
Against.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, hold on, one more.
Good evening, everyone.
State your name and address.
Paul Villa, 15 Janet Drive, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Raise your right hand. So I tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. I'm here tonight because we seem to have a problem with these non-conforming lot sizes in this town. Anybody who's got a big backyard, we seem to want to stick a house in there. Okay? I know this area. You put a house in between where this is going, you're going to be on top of the, the two houses that are on each side. I know, I've lived there for 50 some years now. You want to put a shed in your backyard, and you've got to jump through hoops. They want to send you to zoning, they want to send you to planning, they want to send you everywhere to put a 10-by-12 shed up, but yet we can take a 5,000-square-foot lot, which, I got to say, there's not many of those down in that neighborhood, if any, and they want to stick a house in there. So, my point is here, I'm against this. It shouldn't be in that area. It's in our 10 zone. I've had to jump through hoops to do my things down there, and so has everybody else, so why are we allowing to stick a house in? So I object to this, and I want to stand against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Andrew Vos, 35 Redbonk Court, Cranston.
Would you raise your right hand? Should I tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I live right over the line in Cranston. My backyard abuts the sausage factory that I just discovered was there. I hope I can get a good deal on sausage. No, the truth is that the gentleman's family, the gentleman that owned that house passed away. His family still owns the house, and they go hunting, and when they get done hunting, they go over there for a few days during, after hunting season and do whatever it is they do and stuff.
Have you seen trail trucks?
I've seen pickup trucks.
Alright, alright. Pay attention. Okay.
Okay. Anyway. So anyway, single-family house, I really, you know, I understand maybe traffic's not going to be a big, a big impact. But 5,000-square-foot lot, like Mr. Villa just said, even if some of these other houses in that area are a little undersized by today's current zoning laws, when they were built, that wasn't the law. Now it is. And 5,000 square feet, I'm sorry, if you're off by a couple of hundred feet, yeah, maybe. I mean, I, I don't know what the minimum lot size is. I'm guessing it's around 8,000 or so? 10? Alright, so half. I mean, half the size lot required. And I drive by it every day. And not for nothing, but the upkeep of the existing property that's there is not very well done, and if there's going to be another property there not maintained, and then the second, then I just had another question. It says, there's something in here that reads about contiguous lots as long as the owner owns both. What if he sells one?
Well, you can't, until you can get a subdivision approval.
Okay. So anyway, I'm against this also.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've had everybody. You want to get back and rebut some of this, some of what we've heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to my brother counsel. He actually answered the thing that I was going to state, that no matter what happens to the application, as long as a year goes by, you have the right to bring another application, even if it's identical before the boards. I'd also just like to reiterate the position that Mr. Morrow has been in. You know, I understand the neighbors and the neighborhood's complaints. These are standalone 5,000-square-foot lot that he can't do anything with. It just sits there. He gets taxed on it. He can't build. He gets a sewer fee put on it. He can't use it. And, and the, the fact that he was misguided by town officials, no matter what happened, five to six years ago, and put all the money, time, and expense, and he's really just trying to do it the right way this time. So we just, we're here before the board asking that you understand the very unique situation that this presents, that most people aren't in, and look favorably upon our application.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to either recommend approval or denial of this application? Because we have to forward, basically, we have to forward to the zoning board a recommendation. And the zoning board, as we know, because it's happened often in the past, they're free to ignore our recommendation, so. We, but we should still send a recommendation that we can stand by. Any recommendation, any, any motion?
Make a motion to deny.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Be a motion for an unfavorable recommendation.
Unfavorable recommendation, yeah, that's right. We can't deny. Okay, and there's a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I, I, in terms of further discussion, I, I have a very difficult time recommending that we cut the zoning in half for the 5,000-square-foot lot. So I, I have to vote in favor of this going through as an unfavorable recommendation. So all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no one? Uh, the motion passes. Thank you. Sorry about, sorry about your difficulties. Good luck with the zoning board. Okay, okay. Enough. In all this paper, I lost my agenda here. Item five, public informational meeting, major subdivision for Crompton Avenue. Applicant's legacy construction, location for Crompton Avenue. Is there someone here to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and honorable members of the West Warwick Planning Board. For the record, Attorney Cage, Joe Soshikachi, representing the applicant this evening, Legacy Construction. With me tonight is Mr. Steve Cabral. He's a civil engineer. He's also the project engineer, able to answer any technical questions. I also have the owner of the property with me too, Mr. Eric Constantino from Legacy Properties.
Mr. Chairman, I have marked as exhibits number one, application. Number two, a narrative submitted, and number three, a site plan that is seven pages, and included within those seven pages is the abutters list and the radius map.
Thank you. With you, before you tonight is a plan for a subdivision of single-family homes, in an area of single-family homes. I believe Stephen will tell you the exact number. I believe three of the lots are in need of zoning board approval. We're here tonight for master plan approval. We've had our technical review committee, the town had asked us to look into the feasibility of improving the drainage in the area. We have started that process. We actually have a, a rough plan of what we'd like to do. We're going to submit that to the technical people. If we are successful, the next step would be the planning board, and then to come back here for preliminary approval.
So you're not asking for preliminary approval tonight?
No, just master plan approval, and hopefully a positive recommendation to the zoning board. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Cabral, and he'll go through a little bit of the details, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions. Steve Cabral, I don't know if it's appropriate, but he is a licensed professional engineer, has appeared before this board many times. I'd offer him as an expert as well. It's entirely up to you.
I think he might have an affidavit of notice too.
Yes, for service. I was going to ask him for that, but if you want me to, before or after he's sworn in, it's entirely up to you.
Mr. Chairman, aye. I've been on board's words, and I would recommend-
We accept him as an expert. Do we need a motion and a vote on that?
I'll move the motion, that we qualify, qualify him as an expert witness.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? So, approving, voting to approve Mr. Cabral as, as an expert.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Cabral, you're free to go ahead.
He's got it sworn in, I believe.
Could you state your name and occupation?
Stephen Cabral, I'm a professional engineer with Crosswind Engineering.
So I tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Cabral, before you get started, you've handed me an affidavit and green cards and certified mail. Are these the notices that were sent to everybody in the abutting area?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
I'm marking that exhibit four.
Thank you. Mr. Cabral, could you basically tell the board what the client is proposing, and why these lot, some of these lots, a few of these lots, need a very small, minor zoning relief? And then also, most importantly, because I know there are some neighbors here, about the drainage problems in the area, and what you're proposing to do if this project's approved. Thank you.
Okay, just to make it easier to describe the, the current site, on the easel, I put an aerial photograph of the, the existing property. And basically, right in the middle of that sheet, you see that there's a large cleared field. Essentially, the site's approximately three acres in size. It's, as you can see, there are a few outbuildings at the, at the southern corner. And then, this is the body of the property. The access will be from Crompton Avenue, which is on the right side of the plan. And as you can see, running parallel to the property, there's a paper street, Naragansett Avenue. So what we're proposing to do is actually build a town roadway within Naragansett Avenue to provide access to the site. Now, taking a step back, a few things I'd like to say is that, one, there is public water and sewer in the area. And when we met with the, the fire department during the technical review committee, one of the comments he had was that the location of the fire hydrants are not in close proximity to the property. So what we're proposing in, in the plan set is to actually to install two new fire hydrants. One will be closer to Crompton Avenue to help the existing neighborhood, and then there'll be another one in the center of our property, so that the fire capabilities will be significantly improved. Yeah, the, the aerial photograph that's now on the easel shows the current conditions with the proposed roadway and the proposed homes.
Stephen, can you, for the board and the public, identify where the proposed fire hydrants will be located, please?
Yes, because the number of hydrants are, they're along Crompton, we are proposing one near the initial entranceway, and then there'll be another one more of the center to the property.
Thank you.
Can you turn the easel a little slightly, so that, because there's people in the audience trying to see it? Can you, you okay? You got it, because we got it in front of you. Okay.
Oh, just in case you didn't see, we're proposing one hydrant in this area close to Crompton, and then there'll be another one that'll be more centrally located. Now, because this is just the master plan and not a final design, everything that I'm saying is still subject to approval by the fire department until it's worked in any order. We have to see if the master plan creates a fall in central.
And, thank you. And just, in addition to the meeting with the technical review committee, they raised some concerns regarding drainage. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I know, I, I know you're like the expert in the state on drainage, so can you just identify the problem as you see it, and then your proposed, I know it's only in the early stages, and if we're successful, we'll be back here with a more definite plan, but identify the problem, if you could, for the board and the neighbors, and then your proposal fix for the problem, please.
Okay. Based upon observing the site and talking with Public Works, we've learned that there are catch basins along Crompton Avenue, but the problem is those catch basins have no outlet pipes. They're essentially dry wells. And over time, the openings and dry wells, excuse me, tend to get clogged with sand and silt, and they have a very slow ability to percolate. So this whole area floods during major rainstorm events. And in all honesty, there's no place for the water to go. It's a low-point delator pipe. What Public Works asked that we would consider, and the developer has agreed to the concept, is that we would connect those dry wells with a 12-inch diameter pipe. And the elevation between Crompton Ave and the land in the back is about 10 feet, meaning the far northern side is about 10 feet lower. So we have the ability of draining those dry wells by gravity with the new pipe. And as we get into the final design, we have two options. One would be discharging towards land in the back, but because it's privately owned, we don't believe that would be the best idea for the abutter. But Public Works is in the, they have an existing drainage system. If we could go around the corner closer to Tampa Street, and that would act as a relief valve for the floodwaters there. Now, we're certainly not going to, again, keep everything nice and dry during that extreme event, but it's going to minimize the extent and duration of the floods that occurs today.
If, if we approve the master plan, when you come back for preliminary, you'll have all that engineering work out?
Absolutely. And, and we would have it with the town's engineers in support of it as well. And, Mr. Cabral, you were that the Planning Department has recommended a $2,500 a lot, per lot landscaping, dedication in lieu of landscaping for the lots? I believe that's number 10, the recommendations.
It's in lieu of recreation.
Excuse, thank you. In lieu of recreation. Thank you. Thank you. And to your knowledge, is the client okay with that $2,500 per lot?
Yes. My understanding is that all of the planning conditions are to be fine.
Thank you. Just briefly tell the board, I guess there are three or four lots that may require, or actually will require zoning approval, which will trigger another public hearing, and could you explain to the board what the relief is that we would be needing, and why? Because it's very minor, and I think that's important that everybody know.
Yeah. Now, the first line I'd like to say is that we're, we're in the R8 zone, which requires 8,000 square foot lots, and all of the lots are going to meet that 8,000 square foot requirement. We're not seeking any relief from the lot size. Also, with each lot, as you know, there's a front setback, a rear yard and a side yard. We're not seeking any relief from any of the front, or rear, or side yards. The reason we need relief is that because of the unique shape of the property, which is rather long and narrow, it doesn't allow us to make all of the lots the full depth, which, which is 100 feet. So even though we don't have the full 100 feet, we're still going to, like I said, meet the 25-foot front yard and the 25-foot rear yard. Because even though we're seeking relief to the depth, it doesn't mean we're putting the homes any closer to any of the abutters. That certainly will maintain.
And can you just identify which of the lots that will need the relief, please?
Yes. For the 100-foot lot depth, there's, actually on the site plan, what we did, we put little asterisks where there'd be. But as we enter from Naragansett, the first two lots fully conform. Then as we take a turn- Then as we take a turn, you can see how there's the shape of the cul-de-sac. So the first two lots, which are lots three and four, have 80 feet for the depth and 71 feet for the depth. But one thing I'd like to point out is that if we look at lots four, depending upon where we do that depth angle, we may actually meet it. But in the document ordinance, it mentions that the depth is measured at the midpoint of the lot perpendicular to the right of way. So we have lots three and four. And again, at the northern end of the property, where we have another cul-de-sac, we have a similar situation. So we have lots eight, nine, and 10, which have depths of 53, 87, and 75 feet. Now, the other variance issues have to do with, as we first make a turn, there's lot 12. And lot 12 is on a corner lot. So we had a choice, we could either consider the southern leg to be the front yard, or we could consider the western leg to be the front yard. Now, because we selected the western leg, the lot width is only 76 feet as opposed to the 80. But if we were to consider the other side as the, as the front, we would have needed a waiver for the depth again, because we're 76 as opposed to the 100. And last but not least, because of the quantity that's consumed by the shape of the cul-de-sac, lot four, we're proposing a 50-foot lot quantity as opposed to the required 70. Now theoretically, we could have provided the minimum quantity just by meandering the sidelines, but we thought in the long run, it's better for each of the homeowners to just create a sideline.
I just want to point out that the homes, the proposed locations away from the abutting neighbors all meet the requirements.
They all meet.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on that, they may or may not need zoning on that because it doesn't matter what the house is facing. The ordinance states that the front line is the line separating a lot from a street right of way. Where the lot front line fronts on more than one street, the front line is determined by the building official. So even though your house may face this way, the building official may say the other sides, the front side.
We wanted to have an abundance of caution, give you the worst-case scenario. Thank you for pointing that out. We were researching it. That can, unless there's anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Cabral, that concludes our presentation, but we're happy to open up for questions.
Yeah, I have another question for you, Mr. Cabral. On the aerial, okay, and between lots three and lot four, it looks like there's an existing house there.
All, all of the existing outbuildings will be removed.
Okay. All right, so this, whatever it is, it looks bigger than just an house.
It's a barn.
It's a barn.
Yeah, they put their tractor in it.
Okay, so that, those will be removed. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Cabral or Attorney Chicago?
I don't know why you're supposed to speak, but I have a question about the drainage.
We're going to get into that now. Anyone that wants to speak in support of this application?
Well, I did have some questions about the boundary line, like I was starting before.
Yeah, yeah. Would you like to...
Okay, sure.
I'll wait, actually, wait a minute. Anyone in support? No? So, okay, all those who might be...
I think there's someone in support.
Oh, no, opposition, I just have some questions. I don't know if opposition, huh?
You've already been sworn in, you're still on the road.
Okay. As I say, I'm Stephen Hunt, I have owned property there. And I own this house and all the lots. So you're saying that the house will fit the requirement to the back?
Yes.
Now, my question is, the surveyor has put stakes right up against my fence line. That's not the boundary. The boundary of the land is the center of the wall. The fence line had been put up there because when he put the pool in, it required to have fenced in all the way around the pool. So they, where they put the survey line, I do have a problem with that because at that point, then I'll lose the privacy. Where my, that line is now, I can put trees in, so there'll be privacy. If they go to my fence, I won't have the ability to do that. As you can see, I don't have a big backyard myself. It's probably less than what they would have. And I'm just concerned that I could have privacy. It doesn't affect these lots because I keep those, I just want to keep them in the space. Also, while I think of it, the water accumulates through the area, comes down, and it goes right down Tiffany Avenue. I had to make a big culvert, it becomes a river pot for it to eat in the middle of a storm. In the wintertime, it's even worse because of plows, the plows block it and I have to clear it out every time.
And presumably, what you talked about earlier, Mr. Cabral, about cleaning up that storm drainage is going to help alleviate that condition?
I don't think it will. It'll, our primary focus was in the area where we were performing work. So if there's issues down on Tiffany... His changes really won't affect anything because it comes through here. He's, his idea is correct to try to alleviate the problem that would be created there. That makes sense. I mean, now, when we were working with public works for a trust issue, I sort of go by thinking we look to see if there's any minor improvements, but...
I was hoping if you could, some of the rainwater up above, that would lessen how much was going down the street to Tiffany. But that's, when you, when you, when you get to do the design, you'll be able to deal with that when you come back for preliminary.
It's between me and my neighbor, and if one of us don't take care of it, the water will actually start backing up into our driveways and dark areas.
We really don't want that happening. Okay, thank you.
If I say, okay, we had a property boundary survey prepared by Robert Boyer.
Okay.
And this design is based on the actual dimensions provided with this last one survey. But we'll be back here for the preliminary and the final. And we'll be glad to be abutters in the field and discuss where that block is.
Okay.
So that's a legitimate issue and what I, my client's willing to do is, if he wants, we'll do the field inspection with them at the next hearing. But we're willing to put a privacy fence or landscaping. And to give him, to give him his privacy.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I could have run a line of trees, but if they take that, then I won't have the ability to do it. If they do it on the other side, that's okay too.
So we'll, we'll meet and we'll come up with a solution in between the hearings.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this guy, somebody, were you coming up, sir?
No, he's, he's with me, he's the client. He's the applicant.
I did have a question about the drainage. You said you were going to... Sir, sir, sir.
We've got to keep it sworn in, get it sworn in, tell us who you are.
My name's Charles Zaleski, 65 Hamilton Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Would you raise your hand here? So I tell the truth, tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes. I'm just asking for the drainage. You were saying you were going to change the drainage and try to bring it down from here to there. Well, this property is my mother's here, this is my property from here to here. This is kind of wetland here pretty much, whatever, over here. So, I mean, if you, I mean, if you just eliminate this drainage here and bring it down here, I don't know, you know, what's the proposal on that? That's not saying, I don't, I don't, if you're going to fix the drainage over there, you just can't run it into here, over here, I mean, I'm the property here, you're already going over here, you're not going to change it and make a mess over here, are you?
I agree. And as I mentioned, we know that if we discharge directly to the north, we would be discharging onto the abutter. And we will not.
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
We definitely will not.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you change one thing, the other, so you change it that over here. And this is like, this is my mother's property here, and like, it's this house and these two flats, you know, this is mine here and everything. So, I mean, I wouldn't want, you're already going to mess this, so why would you change it and just put it over there? That's all I, that's all I ask.
Just to know, the town public works indicated that they have drains in this area, that and so they asked if we could continue...
Well, yeah, if you can do that, whatever, without, you know, I don't even make a mess over there. I mean, no problem with that.
All right, thank you.
There is one other thing, if that's okay, if I mention.
You go to it.
Tiffany Avenue continues down as the paper street. And I've been down there and I've seen sewer covers.
So it should be out here.
Put it in, yes. So it can be recorded.
I've been down there, I walked that land and I found sewer covers. That paper street apparently has a sewer line running down there. Maybe the town could look upon accommodating that drainage problem by hooking into the sewer line. It's just, it's just a thought.
And I've got wonderful words in your, in your mouth, Mr. Cabral, but I assume you're going to be doing all of this research out there on the ground, meeting with neighbors before you come back in, assuming we approve the master plan, before you come back in for the preliminary.
Yeah, with the preliminary, we'll have the detailed design.
All that stuff, so that whatever's there, so things that you know are there, you're going to want to make sure you feed that information as he's creating the design.
Mr. Chairman, may I, just as a matter of clarification, there's sewer, which is sanitary sewer, and then there's storm sewer. Okay, so if there are sanitary sewers running down there, we will not be tying into the sanitary sewer. There is, we did receive indication from the public works department that there is some storm sewer, as Mr. Cabral indicated. And the thought was, you know, to bring that drain down, there'll be a holding basin on the property and then potentially either tying directly in to meter it off or tying directly in with the other drainage. So it will be in an enclosed system, it will not be depositing on anybody's property. It'll be, it'll be contained. Yeah, that's not, we would not be tying into that. Thank you.
Hi.
You need to have your sworn in.
State your name and address.
Holly Lombardi Walker for Crompton Avenue.
So I tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. I have a question about the drainage. I'm at this property here. So I'm the one who gets the lake. I've talked to the town a few times, they came and put a berm in. The berm just holds the water on my front yard. It takes a few hours for it to go down sometimes, I mean, in the wintertime, if the plow doesn't come, I can't get out my driveway. It collects there, that's the grade. There is no holding tank or anything on the corner of Tiffany and Crompton. It is at the end of Narragansett, but it doesn't, the water doesn't drain there. It bypasses that. It, if I take a video of it, it looks like a river. I can't imagine with the influx of traffic and plowing, the water comes back through my yard. I mean, it looked like a lake this winter of what I'm going to get. So I really am concerned about the drainage and if they are going to be doing this, which I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I like the layout where it's going to be abutting up to the property and that barn will be down. But I would like to see it corrected because I've talked to, I grew up around here and there are elders who've said it's been like that for 30, 40 years. I would like to see it corrected so that it comes up to my foundation sometimes. So we need something.
Well, thank you. And so the process, just so you know, if we approve the master plan tonight, okay, they're going to go back and do all this engineering, they're going to come back for what they call for is a preliminary approval. And if they have to go to zoning, then after that, we'll have to go to zoning for any zoning variance. But at this point, that's, we don't know if they're going to go to zoning. It's still, we're only on the master plan basis. But between now and the preliminary approval, which would probably be a couple of months before we be back.
At least, at least three.
At least, at least three months. He's going to be in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay? With all the neighbors, to go over your concerns and to try to design a system that's going to meet everybody's needs, okay? Then, then he's going to come back here and we're going to review and we're going to tell you whether we think it makes, it's going to help the situation there or not.
Okay, great, fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
Can I mention one thing in lieu of Holly's conversation?
Please take the mic.
Come, back up, take the mic.
Where Holly gets most of her water is, you come down Narragansett Avenue, there's higher elevations up on Carlson Circle.
Okay.
All that water comes down, it's, it's a high river at, at one point. And it comes down and it sits in her yard. And then it comes around the corner and that creates the whole problem. It's, it's all hooked together.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Just ask a question. Sure.
If you go down the end of Tiffany, at the end of Tiffany, that's considered a dead end, there's a couple of houses there.
There's my house and then...
Right, and it seems like the water is being, is that, is that what you mean by the culvert?
Yeah, we have to keep that open. If it doesn't...
The water's being channeled into that property, right? It seems like the water's being...
It's channeled right down the road and it continues down. Me and, myself and my neighbor have...
Can we get up to the mic?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're continuously making sure it stays clear. If the leaves come down too fast, if anything comes down the river from up above, it clogs it. In the winter, it's a major problem. We have to, when the plow comes down, we have to run out there and explain to them that that's a culvert. We put sticks up before, but you can't put them in frozen ground. So it's just a, that's a...
All right, thank you.
I had Fred Gill out last year when they did the berm, and he, he instructed me that the way the grade is, is that the water is supposed to go down Crompton, around Tiffany, and down the end of the brook, that's the drain. But it doesn't go there. So that's what I mean, if they're going to do that same thing on Narragansett, I don't, the water, it needs like a drainage pipe maybe from the corner of Crompton and Tiffany down to the brook under the road where the water won't sit right there. Because when the cars come by, I'm worried about the traffic, it'll hit my front door. It's so, hi.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Just so you understand, it was, it was Fred Gill that actually raised the issue during our meeting. So he's aware, he was, he was involved in the meeting and he's the one that raised this issue.
Okay, so, so, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion that we close the public hearing. A little motion. Any further discussion about, okay, so all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All right, so now, let's, public hearing's closed and I want to talk about the actual application. I will entertain a motion that we grant the master plan approval for this project.
Motion.
All right, it's a motion made, second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made, second, to grant the, any further discussion? Anyone want to have any further discussion about this?
I just want to ask Mark one question.
Yeah.
He may have touched on this. The, there's reference in technical review to the design, the design, small soil water basin proposed in lots seven and eight, design should consider providing a separate lot to accommodate the development drainage. Have you covered that with...
Yes, they, they submitted, from the technical review committee, to this point, they did submit amended plans that does have a retention basin on a separate lot.
Okay, okay. All right. Anyone else? Any further conversation? If not, it's voted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any pose? No, motion passing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. Thank you all. We'll see you here in maybe two or three months.
Okay. Thank you. I got my next one.
Thank you. All right.
All right, buddy.
I'll keep going, okay? All right, okay. All right. Okay. All right. Okay.
I tried to do two at the same night. Economy of scale.
Item six, public informational meeting, major land development project, 1,600 Division of Madison Road.
Can I, can I close the door or?
Sure.
No? No?
Mr. Chairman.
I can do it.
Mr. Chairman.
Paul Villen will do it.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've marked exhibit number one, the application, exhibit number two, a letter from Med Recycling dated April first, number three, the Med Recycling Report, number four, the survey, and number five, the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Honorable members of the West Warwick Planning Board. For the record, Attorney Kay Joshi Shikachi representing the applicant this evening, Meta Recycle Rhode Island, Inc. With me tonight is Mr. Jeff Hanson, the President of Millstone Engineering. Jeff is a P E, professional engineer, he's also the Chairman of the Situate Zoning Board, and I asked him be accepted tonight as an expert as well.
Is there a motion to accept? Mr. Hanson, is that, he's an expert in engineering.
He's a professional engineer.
Professional engineer, so we can.
Yes, as an engineer.
So, we need a motion to approve. Second, okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hanson.
Mr. Hanson, please.
I have an affidavit of notice, and do you have the green cards and the certified return receipts? And these, the notices and the envelopes that came back from the notices you sent everybody within the budding area according to ordinance?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I offer these to Mr. Furias, petitioner's exhibit, the next exhibit.
Number six.
Thank you. I think you were. Was he sworn in?
He was. Oh, he was not.
He was approved.
Would you raise your hand? Swear, do you name it, an address, so?
Jeffrey Hanson, President of Millstone Engineering, two fifty Centerville Road, Warwick, Rhode Island.
Swear, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Mr. Hanson, just to protect the record, the information that you provided, I asked the question, you answered a minute ago, it's the same answer you're giving under oath.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Tonight before you, is Meta Recycle, Inc. It is a property, it's a, in a commercial zone, and under your code, it's C I, Commercial Zone. It is to install, the applicant's proposing to install a waste-to-energy recycling facility in an existing commercial building located at sixteen hundred Division Road, in a commercial industrial zoning difference, and according with zoning section five point two one, green, renewable, and alternative energy installation and facilities, it's a green project. This project I have with me tonight, the owner of Meta Recycle, answer any questions, and Mr. Hanson will take you through the, basically the layout or whatever, but this project is, will be regulated by D E M, air quality and waste. In addition to that, we will provide to the town at the appropriate time, this again is master plan approval, the appropriate time, we will provide a emergency response plan. This will be contained, this is a state-of-the-art facility, it's a good commercial use and a commercial zone. We think it helps the town's tax base, we think it helps the environment in general, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm going to ask Mr. Hanson, just to kind of give a layout of, take us through, Jeff, if you don't mind, what, and speak loudly, because there's a lot of competition, but the typical what happens, it's all a self-contained unit, there's no danger to any of the environmental area, and I'll let neighborhoods and anything else, I'll let Jeff explain it, thank you.
Just for orientation, we've got a large, existing industrial building on sixteen hundred Division Road, north toward, approximately thirty-four acres, that abuts Interstate Route ninety-five to the north, Division Street to the south. What we're supposing is, just in this highlighted area, in the northeast corner of the existing building.
Approximately how much of that in the building? It's about ten percent, fifteen percent?
Just about ten percent.
Thank you.
So, there's going to be no outdoor activity, no expansion of the existing building, it's all contained in the existing facility.
And it's totally self-contained?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will defer to Mr. Campanella for Med Recycling. It's just a grow-up of the facility and the equipment layout inside, looking at proposing on the southern wall, there's a series of offices, on the eastern wall, the exterior wall, there are existing loading docks, and I create access into the facility, no revisions to that are being proposed, and then they've got the equipment used for the recycling aspect of the process. That's all I can add. Mr. Campanella, can you answer those? If anybody has any questions, just on the overall layout.
It's a, it's a use permitted within the zone.
That's correct.
Okay, so why are you here?
I'll defer to Mr. Carrulo, Mr. Carrulo, because the town asked us to come, and the short version is, I've known Mr. Carrulo for thirty years, and when he says you have to go to the planning board, we'll go to the planning board.
Well, we're happy that you're here.
I am too, because I don't get paid unless I come here tonight. So, I wasn't going to argue the point.
Mr. Chairman, under the, so that you know, and we're clear, that under the zoning code, green energy development is a major land development project and does require planning board review and approval in order for them to establish the use on the site.
Thank you.
Does this go to zoning afterwards?
No, it, no, it does not.
It's just classified. The building doesn't change, the exterior of the building doesn't change?
No.
So, we understand.
It's an empty building now, right? Or it's not empty? It's not empty? So, this is a portion of the building?
Ten percent.
Ten percent of so.
Just so we, Mr. Chairman, most of these projects would probably be like a solar project or, or some sort of a new development. This is a unique, I believe, project, and I, I hope we get a little bit of an education on how the process works, so that people understand. I know there are a couple of people here who may be concerned about air quality and things like that.
So, I'm going to ask the owner to come up and explain, in broad terms and simple terms, what exactly it does, and I ask that he be sworn in, please.
Nick Campanella, do I give my current location?
Location and position.
My, my position is CEO of the company, of Med Recycler. I am in New Jersey, at Three Kelton Place, Manalapan, New Jersey.
Would you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Nick, in simple terms, explain to the board what this process entails?
Sure.
And how you would operate it if you were able to receive approvals?
What we did is we designed the facilities, existing, complete residential facilities, five hundred thousand square feet, we're occupying fifty thousand square feet of existing space that's there now. What we did is we laid it out in two phases, so our first phase that we're currently working with D E M is to build this first phase here, which is a gasification system using paralysis technology, where we'll be able to process between thirty-five to seventy tons. Each paralysis system takes in about thirty-five tons per day of medical waste. So, what we did is we designed a phase two, if we decide to expand a year, two years down the line, so this way we position the equipment appropriately. But for all intents and purposes, we would then have to come back into D E M and get new approvals to make the expansion. So, right now, we're working with D E M, air quality control, we apply for minimum air quality permit, because it's really minimal or no carbon or any emissions that are released into the atmosphere. Pretty much the amount of emissions that we put out is equivalent to maybe four cars' emissions during the course of the year. So, it's very low intensity. Right now, we're working on getting the final approval, so the air quality permit we should have this coming week.
Okay.
As far as the waste processing, we should have also some time this month.
Okay.
So, what we, what we're planning, what we do is, we work with local haulers, companies like Sterrecycle, who's here in Rhode Island, companies like Daniels Waste Management, they go to local hospitals, laboratories, doctor's office, they pick up the medical waste, they bring it to their transfer station, they process and separate, and then they bring us the, their final product. We take it off their trucks, we have telescopic conveyors, goes into the trucks, we unload it, we put it into our conveyors, which then goes into two different macerators, macerators are grinding systems, then it goes into the refractor, which goes into the dryer, it dries up all the product, it takes out all the moisture completely, and then it goes into a paralysis system. The paralysis system is started by using natural gas, and basically what we do is we have two, two walls, so the outer wall has heat, which is approximately about eight hundred degrees, and it heats up the product inside and it turns into ash. So, there's no open flames, there's nothing burning, no combustion inside the, inside the storage facility. We have two sunbeam doors, so when product goes in, it closes, so nothing's exposed to the, to the outside air as well. So, once it goes to the paralysis, it goes into the, the gas cleanup, so it cleans up everything, it goes into a thermal reoxx, and then it goes to these containers that are outside, where we have the generators. The generators run off of syngas, which is created from the product, and we create electricity. So, we're going to generate about one point four megawatts of electricity, of which three hundred K W we use to run our facility during the course of the year, so we're not taking any additional power that's coming into, into the facility, and we're going to either sell the power back to the five hundred thousand square foot building that, that's there to all the other tenants, or if we have to sell it to National Grid, we'll have to come and, I guess, work with your, your department to do paperwork in order to sell to National Grid at a discounted rate.
So, just, I have a couple of questions. It's going to get up to eight hundred degrees, how are you going to heat it?
Well, we start, we, we start the process off with natural gas.
Okay.
But once the system's running, it's a self-contained unit.
Okay.
And it just runs continuously. If we shut down the unit, it takes us four hours to start it up again.
With the natural gas?
Correct.
Okay, and there's natural gas there?
Correct.
Okay, and then, how loud are the generators?
They're inside cargo containers.
Okay.
And they're also insulated, so there's really no decibel levels.
So, nobody's going to hear anything?
We're also facing I ninety-five, and there's also.
So, yeah, there's a lot less noise out of these than ninety-five hours.
Actually, when we found this building, we felt that it was designed specifically for what we were doing.
Good.
Based on the location, and you know, we have the loading docks.
Yeah.
We have drive-up doors, so we really, so what we're looking to do also is, there's, there's existing bathrooms here.
Yeah.
We're looking to build four private offices, a conference room, and then way we're designing is, we're putting a four-foot hallway with glass, so this way, when we do get visitors that, you know, a lot of politicians that want to see the process, and we'll be able to give tours and show how, how quality. So, our project is strictly green and green, and that's the, the new technology that's out there without using, you know.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, any, anyone want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, if I might just.
Hi.
In relation, in relation to the question you asked about why here, as Mark said, it's defined as a major plan, but the purpose of the green, green energy, that you have to take into consideration, is that the purpose of the section is to promote the creation of new green projects by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring modification, and removal of such green projects that addresses the public safety, minimize impacts on scientific, natural, and historic resources, sources are capable with, are compatible with the general neighborhood, in which they're located and are compatible with a comprehensive plan. So, that's the basis for your hearing the matter.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Ellen.
Hi.
Say your name and address.
Amy Petrino, I'm fifteen seventy-eight Division Road, I am directly across from your truck entrance and exit.
Could you raise your right hand?
I can.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. P is in Peter, U, T is in Tom, R, I, N is in Nancy, O. I also own a business in West Warwick, my two favorite towns.
Hey, all right.
So, I'm directly across from the entrance and exit that all the trucks come out of for this property, so I'll show you where I am. So, this is I ninety-five. This building is gigantic.
Yeah.
And right, I am directly across the street. Some, some person did not correctly number Division Road, and it is Division Road, not Street on that side, it's Division Road west of Route two, just so you know, Division Street on the east, which I learned when I moved to East Greenwich. The issue for me is a couple of things. I'm not down on the green, I think it's all great, it's medical waste, it's got to be trucked in somehow. Is this going to be a twenty-four hour a day project? Trucks are going to come in twenty-four hours a day?
That's the question.
Oh, I have lots of questions, so we can go through that. So, the first thing was expansion, because you're in a gigantic building, some of which is empty, some of it's not. When I moved in, that was the MetLife Call Center. So, it was a completely different, you know, eight to four, then they worked a little bit late, eight to eight, maybe eight to ten. Now, it's twenty-four hours a day, we got trucks going in and out, not great when the other side of that road, and I get that that's East Greenwich and not West Warwick, is all residential. So, you have New England Tech, then you have New England Tech's parking lot, then you have Houses, then you have the East Greenwich Country Club, and then there's Houses down there again. There's a daycare just to the west of that, and New England Tech is just to the east of that, with dorms. There's no admission whatsoever from this, which amazes me, how does that even happen? I have a pellet stove and I empty ash, so I can't believe you're, you're built, you're going to burn whatever you said, thirty-five to seventy tons, and there's nothing coming out of this? It's got to be trucked out somehow, it's not getting dumped. There's no way that there's no emissions, I don't, there's got to be something, whatever it is, there's something. If you're burning that much, something's coming out somewhere. So, that's an issue for me. So, the intended fuel is medical waste, where is it coming from and from how far away? None of these routes really touch West Warwick. You're on a state road, you're coming off of ninety-five, you're getting off on Route two, you're turning on one, on four oh one, none of that is West Warwick. So, it's a great project for West Warwick, tax-wise, because you have nothing to maintain for it, but for everybody else, not so great, especially with the traffic. That roundabout is there that they just put in, that New England Tech did, not built for semi-tractor trailers with the pretty bricks and all that good stuff there, so not quite sure how that road, one lane each way, is going to handle all those, those tractor If they do, if you do not get enough locally medical waste, where is it coming from? Like I said, how far away is that coming from? And what's the option if you run out? So, you answered that by saying you're going to burn natural gas, because from what I understand, these facilities don't like to sit empty, it's not good for them to start, stop, start, stop. The fact that all these generators are sitting outside, you can't tell me that no one can hear that. The condos behind me, that go down the side of my property and behind me, all of those people, the, the real estate prices of those condos is half a million dollars. I can't imagine that generator sitting outside is going to be a wonderful thing. And I, again, my biggest concern is, this is starting as a very small portion of this building. This could be gigantic later. I don't think that this is the area for that.
Okay, you want to address those concerns?
So, a couple of issues, and I understand, you know, something new, everyone has questions.
Yeah.
So, first of all, they get four deliveries a day. They generally come in the morning, and then it's usually local hospital, local clinics, they drop off the stuff, and it's a very slow, quiet, controlled burn throughout the day and throughout the night. So, it's not like you have ten cars, fifteen tractor trailer trucks, you're averaging four. Some days, there may be five, some days, there'll be three, but there's going to be four, that's.
Four a day?
Yes, and that's the, and that coming.
Seven days a week?
Yes.
Yes, and they start at four thirty in the morning.
Yes.
Yeah, because they're not there yet.
Trucks turn in there at four thirty in the morning.
And what I will tell you, that's, it's a commercial building in a commercial zone, so I mean, what I can see some of her concerns, and no matter what we say, some people, I understand, have issues, and they, that they may be better suited for D E M, and that's a process that they take public input. So, if there's concerns about emissions, that's really respectfully not a, a planning board issue, that's a D E M issue. If there's concerns regarding the whole permitting process in terms of the environmental use of the property, that's again a D E M issue. We're not finished, we're not completed, she can go up there and everyone else can, you know, weigh in on this. I will tell you that there were other communities that were, were interested in this, but this was, as, as my client said, the best site, close to the highway, it's inside of a building, these generators run very quietly, and they are encapsulated and they are insulated as well.
So, I have a question for Mr. Campanella.
Sure.
Do you have other facilities that you're currently operating?
No, this is, no, this is our first facility. Our manufacturer has the locations that they've designed and built these for.
Okay, okay. Also, oh, okay, so who's going to operate the facility?
We're going to operate the facility.
Okay.
We're actually hiring local, local people.
Okay.
So if there's concerns about emissions, that's really respectfully not a planning board issue, that's a DEM issue. If there's concerns regarding the whole permitting process in terms of the environmental use of the property, that's again a DEM issue. We're not finished, we're not completed, she can go up there and everyone else can, you know, weigh in on this. I will tell you that there were other communities that were interested in this, but this was, as my client said, the best site close to the highway, it's inside of a building, these generators run very quietly, and they are encapsulated, and they are insulated as well.
So I have a question for Mr. Campanella.
Sure.
Do you have other facilities that you're currently operating?
No, this is, no, this is our first facility. Our manufacturer has other locations that they've designed and built these for.
Okay, okay. Oh, okay, so who's going to operate the facility?
We're going to operate the facility. We're actually hiring local, local people. And as far as, like Mr. Shakarchi said, it's four trucks a day, we're getting the other trucks that are delivering to the building, you know, there's 500,000 square feet, it doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing.
They're on property now.
Correct, they're, those trucks are there now, delivering all day long.
They're not going across.
Right.
No, what's there?
Exactly.
So there are trucks coming in.
Right, those are existing.
So when you're, when you're up and running and you're 100%, how many trucks do you think will come in a day?
The equipment that we have processes 70 tons a day. That's the maximum that we're able to process with the machinery there. Only four trucks a day will be able to deliver the 70 trucks, 70 tons a day. We cannot get 80 tons, 90 tons, because four trucks equivalates to 70 tons a day.
And where, where will the waste come from?
The waste is coming from local haulers, such as Sterrecycle, who's in, currently in Woonsocket, and they go to local hospitals, there's about 11 hospitals in the state of Rhode Island alone, so they're going to be primarily hitting all the New England area, so it'll be Maine, Rhode Island, and they're, they're currently doing it now in Rhode Island. Right, Sterrecycle is in Woonsocket right now, and they, they process medical waste currently.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak up? Come on up.
My name is Philip Carson, I'm the attorney for New England Tech, how are you doing, Mark? I'm just here.
Could you raise your hand?
I'm an attorney and I'm representing the school. We just have the same concerns that this woman spoke of. We have 400 kids living on campus, we have to make sure that the environment is safe. We're all in favor of green, so.
The medical waste's got to go somewhere, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just hard to understand.
We're actually going to hire a bunch of your students.
Good.
So, all right, but Attorney Shakarchi, you mentioned that this is going to DEM?
Yes.
What's the process that you're handling?
There, I'll let Mr. Hanson explain, but my understanding are there are two permits pending a DEM, and they, I have never known DEM not to accept public comment from neighbors or butters or anybody, so if they have concerns, this is a relatively new technology, so I will tell you that DEM is going very slow, and they're making sure that they feel comfortable, and perhaps if she has some concerns, DEM may be the better place. But we'll also provide our engineering, if, you know, a lot of people don't believe the applicants, but we'll provide, whatever, we think this is a very safe facility. This gentleman and his wife are going to be there daily, I mean, they're not going to do anything that's going to expose them or anyone else to any kind of harm.
I just moved to West Warwick.
I noticed you've got some stuff here from South Africa?
Yes, that's the manufacturer.
So the manufacturer, so the, and the facilities that scattered all over the world?
Correct.
That do this?
Correct.
So you're not going to be the first to do this?
No, no, we're not. This is proven technology, it's been around for 30, yeah, very long time. I brought my engineer here as well, so he can discuss regarding the technology and, regarding New England Tech, we are looking to bring in the welders, the pipe fitters, in fact, if they'd like, we can even make a presentation to them and, you know, make them feel at ease regarding the students.
Okay, anyone else? One more. Good, how are you?
Thank you. This is the Bourbon A Town Planner in East Greenwich.
Raise your hand, Swear tell the truth, tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. Bourbon A, B-O-U-R, B-O-N-N-A-I-S, I'm the town planner. Mr. Carullo's been very gracious in sharing the details of the project with us in East Greenwich, but if you notice from your site plan, although they are going to occupy 10% of a building that's wholly located in West Warwick, the site is East Greenwich, the access is through East Greenwich, it is map 80, plat 12, lot 99 in East Greenwich. And we have it zoned a combination of light industrial and farm being extremely low density. West Warwick is a lot more progressive than East Greenwich in terms of waste-to-energy facilities, so we don't address this in our zoning code at all as a land use. So I'm just bringing that up, I don't think there are any jurisdictional issues, but we'll hold that in abeyance for now. So our main concern, and I did get calls from a number of residents who did receive a butter notifications here, who live in East Greenwich, and asked us to attend this meeting and learn as much as we could, and their biggest concern frankly was traffic. And I think, you know, visualizing 70 tons of stuff a day was difficult for me to hear that it's four or five trucks delays our concerns a lot. And I know that DEM well controls the air quality and emission standards for this process, so we're excited about it, I think it's a great use, but we're here to, to just learn more, more than anything, and we'll be following it throughout the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak for or against? I see no one. I want to entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
I had a question though.
Okay.
What do you, what happens with all the ash? I think I missed that.
The ash residue that's left over, it's usually about 10%. Lisa broke it. Wasn't me. I can weld it, here we go. Basically, we have about 10% of the residue that's left over, and what we do is, we put it into a container, dumpster, and we sell it to either asphalt companies or concrete companies, and they use it in their mix. So we repurpose almost 100% of everything that we bring in and we dispose of.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else, any other questions? I want to entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, is there a recommendation on this application to consider, a motion?
Any motion to approve, to approve?
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this application, any further discussion? Hearing none?
Just one question?
Yes.
It's a pretty comprehensive document here. You seem to have covered it. I guess, I guess it refers to Department of Health and DEM. There's, tell us a little bit about radiation control.
Based on our throughput process, there are no radioactive products that we're taking into the facility.
But it is monitored.
Yes, yeah, everything that's come, comes in is barcoded and scanned, so anything that comes, let's say, when they pick it up at the hospital, we know exactly where they picked it up and what's in, in the process, so we're not taking any radioactive material.
The document does refer to odor control program, there may be occasionally, there may occasionally be unusual odors associated, you make every effort to minimize through deodorizers, filtration, and storage.
Correct.
Is that?
It's, it's very, it's very minor.
Very minor?
Correct.
And that's a EDM concern?
Correct. Yeah, DEM, that's why the, you know, you have an extensive report, because we're working with DEM for a while.
But it's minor?
Yes.
Am I correct that the exhaust does not go outside, but just contains within your building?
Exactly.
So don't exhaust the outdoor air?
And we're going to have our offices there, so we're making sure that there's no, no odors whatsoever.
So the only emissions is from the generators themselves?
Correct.
Any further questions? Or any further conversation, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And no opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you might want to re-announce, we have a motion to see some people here.
Okay, yes, so if there's anyone that's still here for the, that's here for.
Blasting?
Blasting on Beavish Road, that, that application has been postponed because it was advertised improperly. We made the announcement at the beginning of the meeting, sorry guys, you may have missed the beginning. A lot of other people left, so I'm sorry. Okay, and then, last item, last item, CDVG grant, community development block grant application, it's in our package. I want to entertain a motion that we approve it as presented by Ms. Mansour, the CDVG manager.
Do we need to, do we need any information from Elaine, or we, we got the package, we got it?
We're going to be, this is it, right? This is what we want to apply for, Elaine?
Don't forget the actual, the client, there's an actual document that Mark asked us to submit, that it is in compliance in addition to the planning board's vote.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
But Elaine, so there's no actual amount that you have to get for the, for any work, it's kind of an open number, is that what that means?
The home improvement.
The housing.
It's not an actual.
No, it's on a case, they changed that, it's a rolling application on a case-by-case basis, so when someone applies, we go up to bid, we get the actual amount, and then we request that from the state as opposed to one month, some.
I think I asked that last time, actually. I think I asked that last time.
Okay, okay.
I'll be over the end. I'm sorry.
Are you, are you satisfied with this, or?
Well, we, we won't get it all.
No, we won't get it all. We hope we get it all, but we never do. But those were the best projects that came.
Yeah, I like the projects that are chosen, yeah. Motion to approve. Second, okay. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. And I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Do you adjourn it?
Huh?
Will you adjourn it? Joe, and the second?
I did.